I don't know, does the fire station still have some of the last, every time I see this one came, every time I seem to stop there, they're out.
You got a minute to go, Jack?
I can't go back.
Nope, just not here to put it right.
Oh.
Nope.
So.
Go.
Okay. Well, we've called meeting to order and Jeff, is Jeff Gross on online? If not.
Jeff Gross.
Or Diane?
I'm present.
If one of you could give the invitation.
I do.
Okay, thank you Diane.
Father, we come tonight in humbleness recognizing the privilege we have of living in the Republic of the United States of America. We acknowledge that with freedom comes responsibility, both individually as a citizen and collectively as society. Help us as individuals who collectively form a local government entity be responsible, thoughtful, and mindful of the effects our actions have on the residents of Warsaw and the surrounding communities. Thank you for the trust our constituents have put in us to make wise decisions. Help us think clearly and act responsibly this evening. Amen.
Okay, and if we could say the pledge?
United States, to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jack, don't forget to do a roll call.
Yep. Okay, bring this meeting to order and we'll start first of all with a roll call to of attendance. Jeff Gross.
Present.
Diane Quantz.
Present.
Jerry Fresh.
Here.
Josh Finch.
Present.
Cindy Dobbins.
Present.
Let's see, there was, who's my?
Mike.
Mike Fonderis is present.
Mike Fonderis, yeah. Mike, are you there?
Present.
And I know that Joe, you're present, correct?
President.
Joe is, thank you. Joe is staying home and I'm conducting the meeting tonight. Just give him a little bit more time to make sure that he is, his health is good. Let's see, we have the clerk and the city attorney here as well. So, first order of business is the approval of minutes from 6:15:20. Give you just a few seconds to review it if you haven't had a chance to yet. Is there any discussion about the minutes?
I'd move to approve them as presented.
Jerry Fresh moves to accept the minutes as written. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we will have a roll call vote. Jeff Gross.
Yes.
Diane Quantz.
Aye.
Mike Fonderis.
Approved, yes.
Jerry Fresh.
Yes.
Josh Finch.
Aye.
And Cindy Dobbins.
Yes.
Thank you, the vote is six oh. I, on the advice of our city attorney, I'm, since I'm conducting the meeting, I'm not voting tonight unless there's a tie.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, want to recognize any visitors that we have out there? I see we've got a couple, Jack and a couple of folks out there. We welcome you into our meeting tonight and thank you for being here. Under, let's see, reports and oral written communications. Lynn, I believe you've got the lead on this one, is that correct?
Yeah, it's the second quarter of 2020 investment report and the only investment that was done during this quarter would have been number three, which is an investment of $1,450,000 with Merchant's Bank and it's for 1.15%.
Okay.
And I believe it is the fire pension, police pension, and cemetery firm.
Are there any questions? Anyone on virtually having questions?
Not here.
Then I believe we will go on to unfinished business. Ordinance 2020-03-05, this is the second reading for an amended authorization of independent legal counsel. Is there any discussion about this? Have you had a chance to look at it? Does it meet your criteria? Anybody?
Yeah, I thought it, I'll just say that I redzered again and I think it does what we want it to do. I think that city attorney did a real nice job. He was really great working with all of us, getting through the process. I think we, as a council and as a city, we should all be pretty proud of this. This is the first in the state that I'm aware of and I'm sure there are going to be other class three cities and towns looking to us to see what we did, how we did it. And we're a leader here, so I'm real proud of it. This is something that's going to be who all the citizens, if it's ever needed.
Jeff and Diane, do you, either of you have comments that you'd like to make?
No, I, having worked through the process and we went through a lot to try to get it to where it is. We had a lot of good input, we had a lot of good discussion and hopefully we've been able to incorporate everybody's desires so that it makes the attorney accessible to every member of the council without regard to who proposed something or, you know, what is said, that everybody has equal access to know what's going on and I think that was one of the most important things that we worked through during this process.
Jeff Gross, very good comments by Mike and Diane. I want to thank, as the guy that's been attacking different things, challenging the council, I just want to say how happy I am, not only with the city attorney that we have, his efforts to help our committee, but the work of the committee. I also want to thank the entire council for your patience with me. It's been months now and it seems like I come up with something, I'm concerned here, concerned there, but I will tell the group that even with all of my concerns, Mike and Diane, your comments again, I really appreciate the effort and I think I may have said a few months ago that overall, boy, what a good working document, good draft. And as a result of that, even with all of my reservations, concerns, and complaints, I do want to step on the side of the majority and I want to support your efforts and again, look the direction of just good civil debate, discussion, and making, I think, a proposal that deserves at least a year to try and evaluate. So, thanks again to the entire group. I am looking forward to voting on this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments and thank you very much for your confidence.
Jerry, Josh, Cindy, any comments?
Just kudos to our city attorney for getting that back to us, like, to Sweet, I think, the same evening that we had the meeting last time, so.
Okay, well, discussion is finished. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the 2020-03-05 ordinance.
Okay, Jerry.
I'll second that.
Diane's got the second.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Jeff Gross.
Yes.
Diane Quantz.
Yes.
Mike Fonderis.
Yes.
Jerry Fresh.
Yes.
Josh Finch.
Yes.
And Cindy Dobbins.
Yes.
That is a unanimous six oh vote.
Should I note, Jack is a.
All right. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
So, Jack, do you want to officially abstain from the vote?
Yes, I'll officially abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Joe and I had talked about it earlier and there was, he thought that maybe I could vote, but, you know, rather than muddy the waters, we'll just keep it clean, so. Okay, moving right along. We have new business tonight. Is Jeremy online yet?
I am here.
There you are, all right. I guess you're the only one I didn't check earlier about, but it's crunch time now. So, we're looking at planning tax abatement CF1 for Depew and Wyman and Jeremy, I'll take her way, you take her way.
Yeah, so you do have two CF1s before you. Wyman's was first applied for in 2009. They've made the investment, they've added the additional jobs, more jobs than what they initially said they would. I believe this is the 10th year of their abatement, so I would recommend we continue personal and real property for Wyman. Depew is the second tax abatement. They have a 10-year personal property for new equipment. They have purchased around $20 million in new equipment over the last seven years. There were no employment numbers associated with this tax abatement. They are, some of their equipment's in the seventh year of the tax abatement and I would also recommend continuation of their CF1 for personal property.
Okay, so are these, these all in the same, do we want to take these as a single vote or do we want to do Wyman and Depew at the same time or separately?
They're both listed under new business.
They're both listed in the same ones, so we would do them together.
We can, yeah, I would say.
Okay. Is there any discussion? First of all, I'd like to, we have a few people out here in the, in the audience, are any of them associated with Wyman or Depew? Okay, just wanted to make sure. So, any discussion on these abatements?
I just want to say I appreciate both of these companies, not only their monetary investment in our community, but the type and quality of jobs that they provide and the willingness to work with employees and to really improve the quality of life in Warsaw and I really appreciate that.
Okay.
Jeremy, did you want to address Wyman?
Uh, do we want to?
Jeremy, did you want to address Wyman?
You can approve both of them at the same time or you can do them individually, it doesn't matter to me.
Do them together?
Yeah, let's do them together.
There's a consensus here in the chambers to do them together unless I have objections from anybody virtually?
No, the only point I was making was that we did not give Jeremy an opportunity to talk about Wyman.
Oh, yes you did.
Yeah.
That's the first time you talked about.
I did, I don't.
Jeremy, you get the floor.
I'm sorry, then I missed.
Jeremy missed.
Yeah, I did talk about Wyman, but I can repeat it if you need to. I don't know if you've heard me off, but they are in compliance with both their real and personal property. They've added more jobs than they initially said they would, they've invested the money in personal property that they said they would, so I would make a recommendation that we continue their tax abatement as well.
Okay, sorry for the missed cue on my part if I missed it. I'd make a motion to pass.
Would you, is that for, for both?
Tax abatements. Yes. CF1 for both Wyman and Depew.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Fonderis to pass the tax abatements for Wyman and for Depew. In one motion, do I have a second?
I'll second. Josh.
Josh Finch gives us the second. We'll proceed with a roll call vote. Jeff Gross.
Yes.
Diane Quantz.
Yes.
Mike Fonderis.
Yes.
Jerry Fresh.
Yes.
Josh Finch.
Yes.
And Cindy Dobbins.
Yes.
So, that passes six oh as well. Okay, the next order of business, number two. Jeremy, I believe you've got the lead on this one too, planning transfer resolution 2020-701.
Yes, you have a resolution to transfer some funds into two different TIF districts. The first one, redevelopment allocation, requesting to transfer $5,500 from 44 improvement other than building into debt service. The reason being is the initial bond payment schedule that I have has changed from the original one, so when I filled out the budget, I went off of what was originally included in the bond documents and later was aware that there was a different repayment schedule, so I need to transfer some money into that debt service to pay the difference in what I had budgeted versus what the actual payments are. The second request is to move some money into professional services for Northern TIF for the ongoing airport industrial park and the 300 North project, moving that from improvement other than building into professional services for those engineering needs.
Do we have any questions, Jeremy?
I might add that at today's redevelopment meeting, we discussed this and it was passed unanimously by the Redevelopment Commission.
Anyone else?
I would move to approve resolution 2020-07-01.
Okay, Counselor.
Second.
And Counselor Fonderis, this is second.
Second.
Okay, we'll take the roll call vote. Jeff Gross.
Yes.
Diane Quantz.
Yes.
Mike Fonderis.
Yes.
Jerry Fresh.
Yes.
Josh Finch.
Yes.
Cindy Dobbins.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well, six oh. And, let's see, now, next order of business, number three, resolution 2020-07-02, 2019 adjustment report by Lynn.
So, if you recall, earlier this year, you acknowledged the monies that were encumbered from last year to this year and now this is just a reduction of monies that weren't used in that original encumbrance so far this year, that we need to have approved before we can move forward with our budget for 2021.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 2020-07-02. Diane?
I'll second it.
We have a motion made by Diane Quantz, Counselor, and Counselor Fresh seconds the motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we'll proceed with the roll call vote. Jeff Gross.
Yes.
Diane Quantz.
Yes.
Mike Fonderis.
Yes, approve.
Jerry Fresh.
Yes.
Josh Finch.
Yes.
And Counselor Dobbins.
Yes.
Okay, that passes as well. We'll go right through these, okay.
You're getting the hang of it.
How about that? Item number four, resolution 2020, authorizing investment of public funds and again, Lynn will take the lead on this one.
Guess it should have been my show tonight, huh?
No, you got half of it, you know.
Well, yeah, I guess Jeremy has been. So, every year, we have to, or the council has to approve the investment of public funds in maybe banks or credit unions or whatever financial institutions that lie with, beyond our jurisdiction of the city limits. So, that's what this is, so we can invest some more money, get those huge interest amounts and rates.
Well, something's better than nothing, right?
Yeah, something's better than nothing.
Something's better than nothing.
We've been doing this now for quite a while, haven't we?
Yeah, we have to do it. It used to be every two years, but I think last year they, or the year before, they switched it to every year, needs to be approved.
Okay.
This is Diane, is, does Umba make the recommendations as to where to invest the money now?
Yes, we go with Baker Tilly Investment Services and they.
Oh, yes, that's right.
They bid it out and then I pick the top result if it's not close to a local bank that has a second top amount.
I thought we'd move to them doing a search for us and been getting the best rates we can. 1.15 isn't real exciting, but it's better than nothing.
That's true.
Yep, yep, yes it is. Any other discussion? Anybody on online? Okay, well then, if I can have a motion, or I already got one.
Nope.
I don't have one yet, do I? Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion for you, Jack, to approve resolution 2020-07-03.
Thank you, Counselor Fonderis makes the motion.
I'll second it, Cindy.
Counselor Dobbins makes the second. So, we'll proceed with the roll call vote. Counselor Gross.
Yes.
Counselor Quantz.
Yes.
Counselor Fonderis.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Fresh.
Yes.
Counselor Finch.
Yes.
Counselor Dobbins.
Yes.
And that goes with the six oh vote as well.
Very good.
Okay, well, now we're down to number five, other matters that may become, come before the council. Does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss at this point?
I just have one question, if Jeremy's still on the line, maybe he can help. I was curious where we're standing with the North Buffalo Street project, the condos, as well as the development along the lake.
Cindy, I think I heard him hang up after he was done.
Cindy, I can help you with that. I actually just talked to developer this morning and we've been slowed a little bit by utilities. NIPSCO finally got power into the buildings, believe it or not. We're waiting for cable and he's getting ready to put the landscaping in and had some interest in the units and is looking to getting the first group of mews started behind the building. As far as the plaza, that work is continuing well. Don't think we've had any trouble down there, it's obviously going to take a little while, but that should be done as scheduled this fall. As far as the mixed-use building, one of the tenants, actually, that was planned for that building ended up, you all approved a nice incentive to go out to the tech park, so we had a great addition to the tech park, but we lost them down on Buffalo Street, so everybody's happy about that, but I think it's set back a little bit, the, the building itself as far as trying to put together the deal, we're still working with the developer on that, so obviously that's been delayed and quite frankly, I think a lot of things have been delayed, not just that one particular loss of tenant, but there's other things that are slowing, slowing that, that mixed-use building down, but again, it's part of the regional cities deal that we've got with the developer and that certainly will at some point move forward. I would hope that it would have been started by now, but I am very encouraged by the quality of our housing units down there. The plaza is going to look great and the project maybe not coming along as quick as I'd like it, but we're still moving ahead.
Thank you.
Cindy, this is Diane. At the last park board meeting, we discussed the renovation, also Center Lake Pavilion and building the new maintenance garage and we decided as a park board to recommend that the park offices actually go in with the new maintenance building so that everything could be on one level for one thing and also so that they can have more communication with the, the maintenance people, the office staff at the park board. And so, it will save the city, what is it, about $58,000, Joe, I think, something right around there and.
A lot more than that. The ideal grids of the parks, offices, we're going to go with the pavilion and we found out the cost to do that, the office costs are a lot cheaper to put them all together than, than to have to remodel the pavilion, so that was really the reason for doing that and.
It's probably a lot more efficient too, isn't it, to keep the administrative part of the parks or the management close to the employees?
Yeah, that's what we talked about and so the border works approved the engineering study, so park board is going to be a little bit later this month, it's going to be on July 28th so that we can actually look at the plans that they come up with, so that's moving ahead, Cindy, also as well.
That's, that's good and I was a little concerned about them being on the second floor at the pavilion, so I think this makes more sense.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments by the council? Anybody?
Jack.
Yes.
Jack, I just want to thank you for pinch hitting tonight. I appreciate it, it's been kind of a crazy last couple of weeks, I'm feeling very good. I came out of isolation last Friday and I'm just taking a few extra days, I'm tentatively planning on being back in the office Wednesday, so at this point, still just giving it a few extra days and I have no symptoms, I feel good, just want to make sure everything's, everything is, is fine, so, but I'm well beyond the period of isolation that's been CDC and state recommended and without, without really any symptoms and very little, very little symptoms at all, so I feel very lucky for the way this whole thing finally has turned out. It was certainly a bump in the road, but I just hope if any, if anyone else unfortunately tests positive, I hope that their overall experience is similar to mine with very, very minimal to no symptoms at all, so again, thanks, Jack, for pinch hitting and thanks everybody for understanding. I do want to mention, we got our final comprehensive financial plan back late last week, I've had a chance to look at it. Council Representative Will Hike, who is on the finance committee, Jeremy, Lynn and myself are meeting this week with Umba, or excuse me, Baker Tilly, we'll maybe make some last comments on it, but want to try and get that out to you as promised, to be a guidance through our budgeting this year, that is the purpose of that document and I think it'll really help as we, as we look ahead with a little bit of uncertainty, it'll give us as good a guidance as anybody's got to try and understand what direction we're heading, where we stand right now, maybe what we have potentially in reserve to help to help us cushion some of the changes that we know are coming. So those should be out to you. My guess would be maybe later this week. Keep an eye out for that. I'll probably just send them up electronically, unless somebody wants a hard copy, we can, we can provide that as well. So, all right, well, again, thank you very much.
Okay. Joe, glad you're feeling better.
Thank you. Yep, me too.
A few housekeeping items here, as far as signing, those of us who are here, we'll need
These folks want to speak.
I'm getting, okay, they're up next up. We got documents signed here, as far as those who are attending virtually, please come in sometime this week. Do you have a preference, Lynn?
As soon as possible.
Asap, okay. Come in and sign the documents, and that should pretty much wrap it up for us. The next item, unless there's anybody else on the council who has anything they want to say yet?
I just want to give a last shout out to our city attorney for his really, really great help on this document for independent counsel, for the common counsel. Very much appreciated, and everybody's patience and hard work. Thank you so much. This is, this is a big deal. This is a really big deal.
All right. Our next and last item, we want to thank the visitors for coming here, and we have a couple here, I think, that would like to speak. Okay, if you've got any question or comments, please come up to the microphone, state your name, address, and
Is this on? Oh, it's on. Hi, I'm Corey Hoffien. I live at 625 West Center.
Where?
625 West Center.
Okay.
So just a few blocks away.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Sure, it's H-O-F-F-H-I-E-N.
Thank you.
A concern that has come up in recent weeks is the usage of the aerial fireworks within the city limits. Aerial fireworks within the city limits. Sorry, I talk quiet.
Yeah, just bring the microphone a little bit closer, and you can talk as quiet as you want.
Okay, is that better?
There you go.
Okay. I get the fireworks, they're so pretty, and the boom that goes with them is so exciting. However, I live right here, and I can literally reach out of my window and high-five my neighbor after using hand sanitizer, of course. That being said, it has created some safety issues, so the sparks from those beautiful explosions can be caught on a little tiny gust of wind and blow onto any one of the rooftops within the city. That creates a hazard for our community. It puts our possessions, your possessions, your hard work, on our families in danger. Just that right there, to me, seems like a good enough reason to reevaluate our current ordinances for fireworks, or lack thereof. Now, you may be wondering who this fantastic man is right here. This is my husband. His name is Eric. He is an Afghanistan War Veteran with PTSD. Sorry. A few weeks ago, I had to go to bed early, because I had to be to work at 4:00 in the morning, so around 9:30 or 10:00, a reverberating boom went off. It shook my windows. It scared me awake, scared my children awake, and I had to grab them. They're eight and 10, you know, so I just grabbed them, "Come on, girls, let's go downstairs, let's sleep downstairs." We're, we'll go to the couch and have a little campout, no big deal. However, I knew, because I personally deal with it on a regular basis, what this would do to him. He's been trained by our government to expect an attack at any time. That is a bomb to him. It is, our safety is at danger, so, sorry. He was white, shaking uncontrollably, pacing between window and window, looking for this threat that's inevitably going to get his family. After a minute or so, another boom went off, and we saw the green sparkles above the treetops, and we could, I personally can calm myself down, because now I know there's no threat, we're all fine, we're safe, especially with the protests going on, you just don't know what is going to happen right now. At this point, I can calm down, but as a war veteran with PTSD, it's very, very hard for him to calm down. I get the girls back to sleep, you know, just, let's watch a little bit of TV, and they're fine. But for hours after that, I get to watch my husband shake uncontrollably and pace between window and window and window, making sure that we really aren't under an attack. I'm not saying that we should take away the rights and the fun, but there has to be a way to have that fun responsibly, and safely, and with so much less anxiety than what was given at my home at night. So I'm asking you, as our leaders, my community members, and my neighbors, just take a closer look at this, and I just want to thank you in advance for evaluating our fire recordances within city limits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I know I have to agree. My wife has bugged me to death about this. They start blasting those things after 10 o'clock at night, whenever young children should be in bed at that time, and it could be waking them up. My wife, like I said, she's, she gets upset about it, and I don't, I do too. I think they started around Memorial Day. Now, Memorial Day, to me, is not a, a day to be firing fireworks, for one thing. It's a day to, to honor our veterans and stuff like that, not to scare them to death. And I, I know the state has some limits on theirs, and they have, I think, three days before 4th of July, and three days after that they can use them. Same way with, one other day. But can we, Scott, can we make an ordinance for Warsaw to limit the use of firecrackers at a certain time of the year, or the?
Well, I'd have to check into that more thoroughly. As I recall, there are state statutes that dictate the fireworks rules, but local ordinances can be more restricted in some ways than state statutes, but I didn't come prepared tonight.
I understand that.
So I don't want to say the wrong thing, because I truly don't know the in and out answers to all that. I'm trying to look for it here when that came up, but
I know Cindy and I have talked about this ourselves, between ourselves, and, well, you know, when you're downtown, you're trying to get to bed or something like that, and here go a bunch of firecrackers going off in your backyard, or something, or feels like it's in your backyard.
Yeah, I think it's been worse this year than in some years past, and, and you're right, it started like before Memorial Day, and kind of went on night after night, not just weekends, but during the weekend, very, very, very loud.
Well, I think, I would appreciate it, Scott, if you could look into that, and possibly give us some leadership on that, if you would, please.
Joe, I know, are you still online?
Yes, yes. I, I'm
How do you want to handle it?
The state has times that, that are allowed for fireworks. They also have a broader schedule that can be overridden by local ordinance, but there are certain times that are, they are allowed and can't be overridden by a local ordinance. So I think our city attorney should, and will take a look at what the allowances are by the state statute, and if there's a desire to limit some of those times and restrict them more so locally, I, I think that's certainly something we can look into, but I do know there are certain times that are pretty much revolve around 4th of July and around New Year's. There's a short time there where they're, they can't be any more restrictive than, than that, but
Yeah, so I found, sorry, Joe, I didn't mean to interrupt you. This is Scott Royst. So I found some additional information while we were sitting here. So it appears that Indiana state law prohibits local ordinance from preventing consumer use of fireworks from July 29th to July the 3rd, from 5:00 PM, June 29th
June 29th.
June 29th to July 3rd, from 5:00 PM until 2 hours after sunset, so
That's 12:15.
That may be. And then on July 4th, from 10:00 AM until midnight, and then July 5th to July 9th, from 5:00 PM until 2 hours after sunset, and then again on December 31st, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. So, so state law prohibit, would prohibit us from having an ordinance, what it appears basically from June 29th to July 9th, that's more restrictive, or on New Year's Eve. And I don't have a strong opinion about it. I'm assuming that's the majority of the time when the majority of fireworks are shut off is. And then there, there's other, throughout the year, it's legal to set off fireworks from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM by state law, except on certain state holidays, it's legal to set them off from 9:00 AM to midnight, and those include Memorial Day as one of the days, Labor Day. So
So other than what, what you have read there, local governments have the ability to either deny or allow their usage all other times, right? Is that kind of the way?
Yeah, that's kind of the way I see it. You're prohibited from creating a more restrictive ordinance between June 29th and July the 9th, but
Yeah.
You could be more restrictive, or December 31st, but I suppose if you felt the need to restrict fireworks at other times during the year. And I, quite frankly, for this couple, I know, I don't know how much that helps, really. I'm, I'm sure it's, with PTSD, it's a rough time, is June 29th to July the 9th. I, I'm
I guess my, my biggest question would be, is it possible to not, you know, restrict all fireworks? Because that's not the intention. It's the aerial, the ones, the mortar shells, the artillery shells that go up in that loud explosion. Is there a possibility anywhere to put in a noise ordinance that would allow for that to be prohibited that way? Because it really is just, it's a loud explosion, the shaking of the windows, and I know I'm not the only one, I'm just the, you know, the one that's here speaking up. I guarantee if we go down to local BMW, American Legion, we can talk to some Vietnam vets that, you know, crawl under the bed at night, because they think they're back in the foxhole. And it's just responsibility on a, a community's part to take care of the veterans, and so that's what I'm looking at. I understand what the state law says, and the statutes, and the times that they give, and if I, if we need to take this, you know, suggestion to the state level, then that's what we'll do. I just think that there needs to be some restriction somewhere, because, again, daylight savings time, it doesn't get dark until 10 o'clock. You're going 2 hours past that, you're into midnight. You know, what about your, your neighbors that work at your big orthopedic companies, Zimmer, Biomet, Depew? They have to be up at 6 o'clock in the morning. Do you think they want to be woken up by fireworks at midnight? Because most of these people, they, they don't have responsibility to say, hey, you know what? There are other people around me that might need to do something, and they're just being selfish. And I know that I've tried to approach my neighbor, and he comes back with, well, legally, I'm allowed to do this. Okay, then now that's why I'm here. Yeah. Because I'm trying to find a way to change the legality.
What things, if you want, that's just me?
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, by state statute, city ordinances would be prohibited to be passed to regulate consumer fireworks from those dates that we just talked about. So I think
Outside of those states, can there be, at least that would be given there? Outside of those states, can maybe be something done?
Well, I
I don't see a prohibition outside of those dates by state law.
I, I think that's something that, that could be looked at. No, no promises, but, but to at least look at. I want to thank you for bringing it to our attention, because it, frankly, it brings up a different side of it that I had not thought of before, but I, I think we're just going to have to look at the options and then see what makes sense, and
I'm almost certain this has been a very contested issue at the state level for many years. You know, there's competing interests on all sides of this issue, from fireworks vendors and other people, I'm sure, but, yeah.
Scott, I wanted to mention one other thing. I know in the statute, it talks about the use of consumer fireworks, and I'm pretty confident consumer fireworks are based on the grains of gunpowder that are in the statute. It's possible that some of these mortar shells that are, are unfortunately causing these big booms could potentially be illegal in that they're not consumer fireworks. The other thing in the statute is that those have to be, any of the consumer fireworks have to be lit off on someone's own personal property, or, you know, you can give permission to do them on your property, but if there's just people going around in the streets and, you know, that, that are not lighting on their own property, there, there's a concern there as well. But I, I think we should look into the difference between a consumer firework. I don't know, I really can't honestly say if these big boomers are considered consumer fireworks, but I think it'd be worth looking into as far as the amount of powder in those, and, and I, and I know which ones you're talking about. Some of those things reverberate the windows, and, and they're really, they're, they're dangerous as well.
So the state statutes found at Indiana Code 22-11-14, and amongst the definitions that are found in that code is a consumer firework. Consumer fireworks are limited to ground devices that contain 50 milligrams or less of explosive composition, and aerial devices containing 130 milligrams or less of explosive composition. And, you know, there's a long list of definitions, and what would be a firework, and what's not a firework, so, yeah, that, it's, it's a lengthy code set forth for the, the fire marshal to be able to regulate fireworks in a community.
I think it's appropriate for Scott to dig into this a little bit deeper, to try and get educated on what fireworks are being shot off and sold in this community, and understanding that we are limited during those, that period around the 4th, as well as the day or two around the, of, of New Year's, and, and if, if you all feel like it's worth trying to restrain beyond those dates, I'm certainly amenable to that, but again, I, I think it's going to take a little bit of looking into what exactly the state statute says as far as who's firing them off and what they're using, if it's a consumer versus a commercial firework, and, you know, that may be a, a part of it as well. But I, I do agree with Jack, I appreciate you bringing it to the council. I know there's a lot of people that have that same feel. I've, I've gotten the calls, and I certainly understand the concerns, small children trying to get to sleep, and pets, and, you know, the whole works. It, it gets to become a nuisance at some point.
Yeah. Okay, so you, you hear where, where we're going with it?
I appreciate that.
Good, good. And we've, we've got their name, and maybe a, a contact number or something. We'd get back with you, see what we've, what we've found out. Okay, is there anything else? Jack? No? Nothing? Okay. Well, then, do I have a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Jerry, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Those of you online, don't forget to get down here and sign some papers.
Thank you, Jack.
There's so much more to do after that, because I have to talk to some-
That's still a test to make sure.
And everybody's especially excited this year.
Sign them for him or me?
Yeah. It just says authorized number, it just to say you press to sign it.
Oh, okay.
And I'll attest it and get them over to-
Yeah, that's, that's cool.